Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joy, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstarfin.
Here.
Mr. Elick.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here.
Mr. Bax.
Here.
And Mr. Brubaker.
Here. Okay, thank you. To call for nomination of the office of president.
I'd like to nominate Greg Elick for president.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Joyce, please call the roll.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Elick.
Abstain.
And Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Can I have a nomination for the office of vice president?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Kevin Brubaker as vice president of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Joyce, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
Abstain.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Elick.
Aye.
And Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Motion carries. This time, I think I will turn this over to you, Mr. Elick.
I'm gonna do it one more time.
Right, thanks. Do it one more time?
No.
All right, thank you.
I don't think so.
Thank you, Mr. Gebhardt, and thank you for your service as president the last year. You did a great job, and we appreciate your service to this board.
Thank you. It's been, before you start, it's been a great time being on this board. This is a great board. We all work well together, and I've really enjoyed being president.
Great, thanks, Mike, appreciate it. Okay, moving along on the agenda here for the organizational meeting, onto number F. In order for this Board of Education to continue, we'd like to adopt Robert's Rules of Order. So, in order, let me see here, I lost my place here. In order that our Board of Education meetings be orderly and well-managed, the Alaria Board of Education annually adopts our Robert's Rule of Orders. Our Robert's Rule of Orders will serve as the guidelines for all board meetings, whether they are work session, business meetings, or special meetings. Could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by board member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Christophin. Madam Treasurer, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries, thanks. Okay, next item on the agenda, the appointment of the Lorraine County Joint Vocational School District representative from our board. Board member Brubaker.
Yes, I'd like to read a resolution. Whereas Lorraine County Joint Vocational School Board has a vacancy on its board, whereas Alaria City School District is a member of the Lorraine County Joint Vocational School District and is authorized by the Lorraine County JVS Plan on file with the State Board of Education to appoint an individual appointee to fill the vacancy. Whereas Alaria City School District has reviewed the statutory requirements for making the appointment, including those in the Ohio Revised Code 3311.19 as amended, and its requirements that JVSD board members have experienced as chief executive officers, chief financial officers, human resource managers, or business, industry, or career counseling professionals who are qualified to discuss the labor needs of the region with respect to the regional economy, and requirement that the JVSD school board members represent employers in the region served by the Lorraine County JVS and be qualified to consider the state's workforce needs with an understanding of the skills, training, and education needed for current and future employment opportunities in the state, and a requirement that the JVSD board members be selected based on the diversity of the employers in the territory served by the Lorraine County JVS. Whereas Alaria City School District has performed and documented its due diligence in considering the appointees' qualifications, including the appointees' qualifications to meet the legal requirements to serve, and whereas Alaria City School District has party to the memorandum of understanding with Lorraine County JVS and other school districts that make up the JVSD, and this appointment is in keeping with the terms of the MOU. Now therefore be it resolved, the Alaria City School District appoints Annie Karstarfin to the Lorraine County Joint Vocational School District for a three-year term of office to commence on January 11, 2017, and expire on December 31, 2019.
Thank you. I have a motion of a resolution by board member Brubaker. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by board member Bax. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, moving along to the next item on the agenda here. Regular meetings. Attached to your packet is a list of board meetings. To establish regular board meetings, dates on the first and the third Wednesday of the month, except where noted unless changed by the formal action of this board per enclosure F5. There continues to be discussion about location for these meetings, and I was thinking that maybe we could go ahead and approve the list and the dates in all locations here, and then further discuss the different locations, if that's okay.
So, you're agreeing to these that are on the list?
Yes.
Okay.
The meetings, the times, the dates, but we're not sure about the locations at this point.
Do you have a motion to include the meetings to take place here until essentially being amended?
Yes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A second. So we have a motion by board member Gebhardt, second by board member Brubaker. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Discussion?
Oh, any discussion items?
He's fine.
Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Student teachers, to approve the resolution to authorize a superintendent JAMA or his designate to approve agreements with the universities and colleges to place student teachers and field trip experienced students in the Alaria School District. Be it resolved that the authority is given to superintendent JAMA or designate to approve the agreements with university and colleges placed under schoolteachers and field experiences students in Alaria School District during the calendar year 2017. Do I have a motion? Or no, we're gonna just continue on and just do one motion on this. Reading of the minutes. To approve the resolution to waive the reading of the minutes, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Alaria School District that the authority be hereby given to waive the formal reading of the minutes to previous meetings at the regular board meeting during the calendar year, and this is consistent with the way the boards have been run in the past. All meetings, minutes will be read at the board members' leisure. Moving on to the Board Service Fund. To authorize the treasurer to establish the Board Service Fund in the general fund in the amount of $10,000. This is the purpose of paying expenses for the Board of Education during the calendar year 2017. Appointment of law firms. To approve the appointment of the following law firms to represent the Alaria Board of Education in the administration in matters deemed appropriate for legal services during the calendar year 2017. Those firms are Fawer, Keyes, Walker &amp; Donovan, Hubbard &amp; Hubbard, Squire, Patton &amp; Boggs, Bricker &amp; Eckler, Smith, Peters, and Kaleo, O'Toole, McLaughlin, Dooley, and Pacora, Pebble &amp; Wagner, and Walter, Haverfield. Public records training. To appoint the treasurer as the boards designate to the public records training on behalf of all board members according to Ohio Revised Code 109.43B and 149.43E1. Also, to approve the appointment of Board of Education members to the following committees and board assignments. Urban Commission Board Member Annie Christophin, OSBA Legislation Liaison and OSBA Student Achievement Liaison Board Member Kevin Brubaker, Lorraine County JVS Board Member is Annie Christophin, Self-Insurance Committee and Wellness Committee Board Member Michael Gebhardt, Endowment Board Board Member Jim Bax, Early College Rep is Greg Elick, Faculty's Plan Master Planning Commission Committee Liaison will be Michael Gebhardt, the Policy Committee will be Jim Bax, and the New Audit Committee will be Greg Elick. So we have items five through 11. Could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by board member Brubaker and a second by board member Bax. Any discussion? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Treasurer action items.
Standard mileage rate. To approve the standard mileage rate established by the IRS of 53.5 cents per mile effective January 1. Number two, advances for the 2017 calendar year. To authorize the treasurer of Alaria City Schools to seek advances during the 2017 calendar year from the Lorraine County Auditor as they become available. Real estate tax complaints. To approve the resolution to authorize the treasurer or designate to act as agent for the Board of Education to file and sign real estate tax complaints for the calendar year 2016 to be heard in calendar year 2017. And those are my recommendations for this evening.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer action items one through three?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I have a motion by board member Gebhardt and a second by board member Christophin. Any discussion?
Uh-uh.
No discussion. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. With that being said, with no further organizational business before this board, do I have a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting?
So moved.
Second.
That was a motion by board member Bax and a second by board member Christophin. Could you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. It's time to go right into the regular meeting. So I think officially we'll call the meeting to order, and we will not do the pledge again. Do we have visitors' comments?
No, sir.
No visitor comments today? All right, then we'll get right into it. Board member discussion? Any items that we'd like to discuss?
Yes, I would. I was at the basketball game last Tuesday, last home game, no, Friday.
Friday.
When I left, and this has happened a couple times, there's people parked up behind in the first row, and then Friday, the buses parked next to them, so the whole aisle was blocked. Nobody can get through. And the week before that, I was parked in one of the aisles. I tried to get down, the end aisle, and there was cars parked on both sides. You could not get through, and I think that's a problem. I think we need either a policeman out there to keep these people moving or something. And the other thing is...
Excuse me, Mike, just so I'm aware, when you're talking about the main parking lot?
Yes.
Buses are, cars are parking in the aisles themselves?
Yes.
Okay.
And then the buses come up, and they were parked next to them. Nobody could get around.
I can.
And also...
Mike, are you referring, you're referring to the, you're referring to the main driveway?
Right. And the side driveway.
Oh, the loop. I got you now. Now I know what you're saying. You're saying they're parking in the loop?
Yes.
Okay.
Also, I've noticed we have a sign in the gym that says, "No food or drink." That hasn't been enforced in a year or more. I think we should take it down if it's not gonna be enforced.
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, board member Gebhardt. Any other discussion items? Couple minor things I'd like to bring up first. I'm looking forward to our master plan going into effect coming up soon. Later in this meeting, we'll be discussing and voting on our consultant, who is actually here today with us, former superintendent Rigda, and we're going to ask him to come to our February meeting, February, the first February meeting, and begin to talk about the building process. So we're really looking forward to that. And then also too, I believe at our next January meeting, we'll be talking about hiring our engineer architects for the stadium. So a lot is really going on, and really looking forward to this February meeting with, with Mr. Rigda. Jim, did you have?
No.
Anything on this new JVS board?
Just looking forward to it. I have not been to my first meeting yet, but I'm excited. But also, I just want to say that I'd like to thank Alaria City Schools and the community for the support that we received on January 1, when we had the cuts of kindness for our youth, and we had a great turnout, and I thank Alaria City Schools for their participation.
Great. So moved. Any other items? Great. Okay, thank you. Moving along to meeting minutes. Attached to our agenda were the meeting minutes for the December 14, 2016 meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review those, and if everything is okay, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes as written.
I move we approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I have a motion from board member Bax. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from board member Christophin. Any discussion? No? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Moving along to G, Treasurer action items. Madam Treasurer, you are up.
Number one, donations. To accept, acknowledge, and express appreciation for the following gifts and donations. Community of Faith United Church of Christ, Alaria, Ohio has presented a donation of hats, scarves, and gloves valued at approximately $135 to the Communications Department. The donation will be used for students in the district in need of cold weather gear. Vintage Love Boutique in Avon, Ohio has presented a donation of winter coats valued at $560 to Alaria High School. The donation will be used to provide students in need with a warm coat. The Great Northern Mall of North Olmsted has presented a donation of $150 to the Music Department at Eastern Heights Middle School. The donation will be used for supporting students in the Music Department. BASF Corporation of Alaria has presented a donation of $500 to the Science Olympiad at Alaria City Schools. The donation will be used for supplies, materials, and T-shirts for the Science Olympiad. Number two, to approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures as detailed in enclosure G2. Number three, to approve the OSBA Service Agreement and Service Addendum for the proposed, for the purpose of financial consulting for fiscal year 2017 as detailed in enclosure Mr. President, those are my recommendations.
Okay, we've heard the Treasurer action items. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Brubaker. Any discussion? I'd just like to bring up that with the Audit Committee this year, I've already begun discussions with our treasurer about our open purchase order policies, and we've already got the ball rolling on that, and if not at the next meeting, the following meeting, we will have a recommendation to potentially change that and make that a little bit different.
Watch your updates for suggestions on that.
Other discussion items? No? With none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Treasurer other?
The tax budget. Recommendation is to approve the 2017-18 tax budget and forward it to the Lorraine County Budget Commission for their consideration before January 20th as presented and placed on file.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
A motion by board member Gebhardt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion items? No discussion items? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. There are no Treasurer report items, so could we please move into the Treasurer Report on the OFCC/OSFC?
Yes, the recommendation is to approve PM Rigda LLC at a rate of $60 per hour as the owner's representative during the construction of the district's master building plan.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Brubaker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Christophin. Discussion items?
I thought that was supposed to be $20 an hour, so...
It should have the word consulting in there as well.
Owner's rep and consultant?
PM Rigda Consulting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
That's what makes it surprising. It's those letters. Yeah, who says me? Read my thoughts.
PM Rigda Consulting. Okay, I got that.
All right. Well, I'm sure that 1099 will get to you either way you look at it. I would like to say that this board is very happy and thankful, Paul, that we'll be able to utilize your experience that you gained with building the high school to be our owner's rep and to work with our fine team of Mr. Wall, Mr. Rigda, and everybody here. So we really do appreciate it, and we're already looking forward to the updates in February, and we'll be in discussion about maybe some more updates so we can really feel like we're hands-on and aware of everything going on with this process, so...
I look forward to it.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other items? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. Welcome aboard. PM Rigda Consulting LLC.
Sounds so nice.
Okay, moving along to Superintendent action items. Mr. Superintendent, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, at this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under Superintendent actions for the board's consideration this evening. Item number one, to approve the payment of stipends as listed below. Amount as listed below to the following teachers for their support in the Ashland University Student Mentoring Program. The stipend voucher will be supported by the Ashland University funds. This goes along with what you voted on previously to allow student teachers in our district and up-and-coming educators as they earn their degree through their appropriate university. Item number two, approval of purchase order. To approve the purchase of a kinesthetic six-person classroom desk from Gopher Supplies for St. Jude School. This purchase is not to exceed $26,463.42 and will be funded by IDEA Part B funds. This comes, this will be paid through the auxiliary service funds for a private school. This is where they can allocate the money as they see for their organization. Item number three, to approve the overnight athletic field trip for the Alaria High School cheerleaders to attend the state cheerleading competition at Worthington Kilborn High School in Columbus on Friday, March 3, 2017 through Saturday, March 4, 2017, as detailed in enclosure K3. And I think as you recall from about a year ago at this time, that's where our girls came home with the state championship, and we're hoping for the same outcome this year. I know they're excited, and they've been practicing, and they got a great program going on at Alaria High School. Item four, OSBA. To approve the OSBA Service Agreement for the purpose of providing the policy web update service for the 2017 school year as detailed in enclosure K4. Again, that's just the policy agreements that we have available for the community and staff as reference to our OSBA policies. And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations for your consideration.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Superintendent action items?
So moved.
I have a motion by board member Bax. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by board member Christophin. Any discussion items? No? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax.
Yes.
Ms. Karstarfin.
Aye.
Mr. Brubaker.
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Aye.
And Mr. Elick.
Aye. Motion carries. With no Superintendent other items, let's move along to personnel action items recommended by the Superintendent. You have the floor again.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make the following recommendations under personnel actions as recommended by the Superintendent for the board's consideration this evening. Item number one, to approve the appointment of the following certified staff members as detailed below. We have Alex Brown, who will be a long-term sub-intervention specialist at Crestwood and at Ely. Lindsey N. Brown will be a long-term substitute intervention specialist at Franklin. And Courtney S. Clark will be a long-term substitute intervention specialist at Franklin. We also have Christie Grias. I hope I pronounced that correctly. I have it on here phonetically. Is Christie here? How do I say, how do you say? I'm so sorry.
Crise.
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 You know, I have it, I have it on here right when I did it with my old little long bow signs over the A and the hoof and, and then I didn't know what the heck I wrote, to be honest with you, so...
Crise.
Will be a preschool itinerant intervention specialist at the Early Childhood Center. And then we also have Barb Bangaman, who will be a substitute psychologist. Item number two, to approve the following employees and non-employees as game workers for their athletic service as detailed below. Again, you'll see the supplemental contracts underneath the certified staff as well as the classified, or I'm sorry, non-employees. And again, all these individuals have been vetted appropriately and do hold the proper certification and/or licensure. Item number three, to approve the retirement of the following classified administrator as detailed below. Stan Boozer, and I'd like to congratulate Stan on a wonderful career in the Alaria City Schools and wish him the best as he starts a new chapter in his life in the month of June. Item number four, to approve the retirement of the following classified staff as detailed below. We have Philip Myers, head custodian at Windsor, and Debbie Bigrigg, educational transition professional at Prospect. Item number five, to approve the transfer of the following classified staff member as detailed below. This is Christina Malenko. She will go from administrative support associate six hours to an administrative support associate for eight hours in the registration department at Illyria High School. And this comes from the resignation of the staff member that we approved at the last board meeting. To approve the appointment of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Matthew Kalachewski. Thank you, Matthew. As the new utility member at Ely School. Boy, these names are tough to knock down. Item number seven, to approve a $600 monthly miles travel stipend for Mr. Wall, Jim Wall, effective December 1, 2016. Mr. Wall no longer drives a district leased vehicle. The vehicle he drove was returned to the leasing company in November of 2016. And again, rather than leasing a vehicle, Mr. Wall would be using his personal vehicle and just have the travel allowance for his use of that vehicle rather than paying the lease and the district paying the lease, the insurance, and the gas. It's the same thing, and that stipend will include all of those items.
Okay.
And with that, Mr. President, that concludes my recommendations for your consideration.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action items recommended by the Superintendent?
So moved.
I have a motion by Board Member Kristofin. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Gebhardt. Discussion items? No discussion? Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion carries. With no other personnel items, how about Superintendent Report, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I do have several items I would like to share with the board and the community this evening. First of all, going along with Mr. Gebhardt earlier, the boys' basketball team, how proud. Last Friday, they played Mentor. Mentor was an undefeated varsity basketball team, and the Illyria High Pioneers beat them on Friday night. And then last night, the boys' basketball team traveled to Medina and again played an undefeated Medina basketball team and won at the end with, I was not there, you were there, I know, Mr. Brubaker, but it was the last buzzer.
Right. Four seconds left, and Mr. Blanton hit a three-point shot to win the game.
Awesome. I love it. So congratulations to Mr. Lerrick and his, his crew at Illyria High School. They're doing a great, great job. This past Saturday, I had the, the pleasure of attending the NAACP Forum whereby members of the NAACP Executive Committee were sworn in as officers. But they also conducted a forum on Saturday, and they invited several community leaders to sit on a panel, and the topic was issues that we face within our organizations, and what are we doing to curtail the issues? And I was proud to be representing the Illyria City School District. Some of the other panelists were Chief Whitley from the Illyria Police Department, the, the warden of the Grafton Correctional Facility, a pastor from a church in Illyria, I do not remember the gentleman's name, the county, Lorraine County Health Administrator. And the, the program proved to be quite educational. I had an opportunity to talk about some of the issues that we do face in the Illyria City Schools and spoke about the progress that were being made on those issues from student graduation rate to fights and violence that we experience in our schools, to getting parents involved and community members involved, to how proud we should be as a community for passing Issue 23 in November, and that our students deserve, because the buildings were an issue, and I brought that up. Our, our kids were facing issues with the school, whether it was 100-degree classrooms and, and the start of the school year, cold classrooms in the winter, to just items that they didn't have the best of as surrounding districts did in their students. So that was brought up and discussed, but it was a great opportunity to sit on that panel and to represent the district. There was a large crowd there, too. I'm not exactly sure how many. I'm guessing 75 to 100 people in the audience. And it was a very, very good program, and you got to hear about the issues plaguing the county and what's being done to, to curtail those issues. Just a reminder, this Monday is the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration at the Illyria High School. If you would like to participate, the Freedom March starts at City Hall at 10:30 in the morning, and that march goes from City Hall to the Illyria High School Performing Arts Center, followed by a program that begins at 11 o'clock. And I'll be participating in the march as well as the, the program. I get to do a welcome to the, the members who are there that day. And it's usually a very large turnout for this, this event. Also, our kids are being recognized at the program for acts of kindness and what these students have done or what we're doing within our school system to just make it a better place. Continue on with my, started visiting buildings and classrooms right after break, and I'll tell you, things, the only things I noticed is some of the kids grew, I think, over those two weeks that they were off. But so many great things taking place in our classrooms. I was at Franklin School last week, and honest to God, I went into every single classroom in the building that day just to say hello and welcome back. And, and it amazes me of the great things that take place with our teachers and our kids and the amount of work that these individuals put in each and every single day. Northwood today, I brought back some memories. I visited Northwood, and as I was walking in, Stacy Gatton, the assistant principal, was your perfect time. I need you to monitor our fire drills. They took advantage of the good weather today, and watching a fire drill at Northwood brought back so many memories. I can't tell you how many I did over my, my time period there, but you figure one a month at least, you know, for eight years that I was there, it gets quite a bit, so. But with that, that concludes my update. And just, just so you are aware, so many great things taking place in this district each and every day, and I couldn't be more proud to, to tell you that.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And we are also very proud of this district, so proud that we would like to meet our new employees. Would you kindly have Mr. Taylor introduce our employees?
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. John. Thank you, board members. We actually are pleased we have three of our new hires here this evening, and it's kind of unbelievable that we're ending the first semester, but we're still hiring teachers, which we do throughout the year. So with that, I'll ask them to stand up. Lindsay Brown, you voted on this evening, will be joining Franklin School. Kathy?
Christie.
Christie, excuse me. I'm going to try the last name.
Crise.
Crise. I'll learn it by June. Okay. Who will be here at the Village. And Matt Kay, who's joining Business Ops at Ely School.
Great. Welcome, guys. Welcome to Illyria Schools.
Yes, welcome.
Okay, with that said, let's move on to the last item. Board of Education, any items for the good of the cause? Start down here. Board Member Bax, any items?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Okay. Board Member Brubaker?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
And Board Member Kristofin. Anything?
Nothing at this time.
Okay. With that said, we are all done. How about a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Brubaker?
Aye.
And Mr. Elick?
Aye. Motion adjourned. Thanks for coming, and have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.